Okay, alright everyone, now welcome. As everyone can see, we're on live TV, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. First order of business here is to adjustments to the agenda. We'll have a couple of adjustments. After C, which includes the previous meeting minutes, we'll go to H1, presentation of students from the marketing and marketing class. So we can move you up further into it. As well as out-of-district sports teams, just in case anyone's here for the, for that discussion about the sports teams for our district. And I presume everyone else is here regarding the budget process. So, we'll get on, and adjustments to the agenda, that's all I had. Next approval minutes from the previous meeting, March 13th. Do we have a motion?
No.
Second.
Okay. John? Peggy? En faveur de ce que... And if we can go to the presentation by students from the high school marketing, making and marketing class. You guys want to come right up here?
Of course.
Alright.
Alright, so Atlantic Wave Shades. This is our product, as you can see. So, our product for making and marketing this year is sunglasses. We currently have two pairs of sunglasses. Maple and mahogany. And basically, we have just been hand-making veneers with wood and courtesy of him making, cutting laser, laser cutting our veneers and making our sunglasses. And...
Can I?
Yeah, of course. And...
They're just prototypes, so...
Yeah, this is our, this is our...
That's if you break it, you pay for it.
Yes, this is our third prototype. Not quite finished, but Nathan will talk about the process of making them.
Yep, so a little bit in the process of making these sunglasses. So, since we are using a laser cutter, it is required that we need to use computer software to actually draw out these sunglass arms and sunglass frames. So I use a program called Rhino, and this allows me to draw lines and curves to like exact dimensions. And I can import these into the laser cutter program so that I can, so that the laser cutter can actually cut them. So right there, on top left, those are the sunglass arms that we have right now. Those are most likely going to be the final ones. Have our logo on it. Sunglass frames right here, where the lens is going. We got guiding holes on where to put the hinges and everything like that.
Can we pass this around?
Yes, of course.
Just be gentle.
Again, third prototype.
Yeah.
So, the second stage of the process is that we import the drawings in Rhino to this laser cut program. And this is where I can adjust the, what the laser can do. So I can set it to engrave. If you look on the side of the sunglasses, you can see the engraving of our logo on there. Or I can, I can also use it to cut out the sunglasses. So I can set the correct speed and power of the lasers so that you get the optimal depth and, yeah, the optimal depth of the engraving and everything like that. Third stage of the process, you actually download it into the laser cutter. And this is where the laser just does its thing, engraves, cuts. And a little kind of design and engineering uniqueness about these sunglasses is that we kind of use a bi-axial ply formation in the sunglasses, which is basically a fancy word for crisscross pattern of the wood. So one wood green is going horizontally, and then the other is going vertically, and that creates a very strong and stable structure, essentially.
Alright. Okay, so, I'm Ryan. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our production line. So as you can see right here, this is a, this is a form. Yeah. Turn it that way so you guys can see how we do it. Basically, what we do is we cut this out on the, on the laser cutter. Hopefully that doesn't fall. We cut this out on the laser cutter, and we put it on this curved surface. So we can then put the, the frames for our sunglasses in there, and we hold it with glue, ratchet straps, put a little of this stuff down. And we also do the same thing for our arms. As you can see, we, we have forms to curve them.
We also have a lot bigger version of the arm.
Yeah.
One.
It's not with us right now, but this is our, this is our form for the frames. This is a little, hold on. This is, this is also what Nathan was talking about.
Yeah, so this is, this is what the laser cutter actually produces. So I can make basically an array of however many sunglass arms or frames I want. I just need the correct size of veneer. So I can just very efficiently like pump out like a hundred sunglass frames and arms in like 30 minutes. So, very efficient.
Alright, and this little jig right here is something someone in our design and engineering department came up with. Basically, we use it to drill holes into the, into the arms, where we then put the hinges. We're still working on a way to finalize putting in the hinges because it's a difficult process working with those little things. So yeah, there's a, there's one jig. We just drill right into it like that. This gets held in place and kind of how that works.
So this is our shop. We actually have an online website for our, to buy our sunglasses. There's our home, and then there's shop. To order a pair of sunglasses, you just press on shop, and just like any other real-life website, you can order our sunglasses online. And then you basically, also if you like want a pair of sunglasses with cash or with check, you can go to the office. And eventually, when we have more pairs of sunglasses to, to give, like for people to purchase, you'll be able to do that right in the office. And yeah, there's also our links to Facebook and Instagram right on there. It's our logo, it's everything.
How much are you selling them for?
Uh, well that's to be, to be determined.
Yeah.
We also...
So I would suggest you get everyone's name on a list. That's Ryan now.
Since they're just our third prototype, once we get them, we're like, alright, this is what we want. This is our final. Then we also plan on, we have someone in our class that knows how to sew. And we also planned on having her make these little bags that we can put the sunglasses in. Really good quality bag, I guess. That, you know, you can wipe your sunglasses with. Because our lenses are Oakley replacement lenses, so they're really high-quality, polarized. And so yeah, and then we also planned on having a box to put them in, like a wooden box. And so, you know, they'd be...
What's your goal?
Sell as many as possible.
The goal for the class, the goal for the class was to actually sell 50. But in previous classes, it's kind of been bigger products. And it was canoe paddles and, what was the other one? Chairs. So that's like a little bit harder to make, I guess. But sunglasses, although they are hard to make, they're smaller, so we can just keep on selling them. Because 50 sunglasses is not that much.
Yeah.
As of right now, that's our plan.
Do you have a backorder for them right now?
Or like pre? Uh, we haven't, we can technically, I guess, like, with our marketing department could like press a button and people could preorder. But we're still like working out the bugs in our production line because, just because of, you know, people not showing up and different reasons.
Yeah.
Do you know how much it's been costing you? That it's gonna cost per sunglass?
Uh, per sunglass, it'd be about 10 bucks.
That it's costing you for the material?
Yeah.
The labor's free.
The labor's free, Larry.
Well done.
Could you, could you guys say a little bit about how you got your money to start this up?
Uh, we...
And how you're organized?
Yeah, we did a bank presentation, which took us a little bit. And this was like, what, three weeks ago?
Yeah.
Three of us, and then I think it was three other people went down to the superintendent's office, presented in front of him, our superintendent. Our principal, and some other people that were there to listen. Yeah, we did that to get the money for...
So they got some money to do it.
Well, it kind of teaches you what you have to do if you get into the process. That's what you have to do.
And you did a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Tonight and then.
Thank you.
How's your company organized?
Uh, basically, we just have four departments. We have design and engineering, production, finance, and marketing. And we are both part of finance, and he's a part of design and engineering. We were hoping for more representation in the other departments, but he just said they couldn't make it, so...
A little busy.
Yes.
And we just cut with the new laser printer that we just received.
Yes, yes. That's like how the whole thing's kind of set up, so that's pretty handy.
Yeah.
How did you pick glasses?
Um, well, basically, in the beginning of the whole making, marketing class, we got together and I think there was some, like 17, 16 of us in the class. And we paired up with one other person. And then we got different ideas such as like bike racks.
Fishing poles.
Fishing poles, shoe racks, mugs.
Coasters.
Ton of different stuff, but in the end, we thought that sunglasses was the best idea for the class. Thanks.
That's great.
Ben, recognize your teachers.
Mr. Schwaim and Ms. Manahan help us a ton. Ms. Manahan with the technology and like finance and marketing aspects. And then Mr. Schwaim back there helps with production and design and engineering. So those are two teachers. Uh, yeah, so...
Yeah, we have a...
Because we, as you can tell, we passed around our two pairs of sunglasses. And I think those are the two colors that we plan on doing.
Yeah, the two, the two colorways.
So if you guys wouldn't mind if we took a survey on which ones you liked better. I don't know if it's gone around the whole room.
Yeah.
But I'll collect them, and then we will see what you guys like more. We can just like...
Market research, good thinking.
Yeah.
Alright, so before we do this, I'm Ben Pierce. That's Ryan Russell, and that's Nathan Chatter. Okay, so, two sunglasses. And if you like this color way better, please just raise your hand.
Come on, Ben, keep them up.
Is there, is there one that's more sturdy than the other?
Um, well, they're made the exact same way. It's just a difference in, just a difference in color.
Very high quality.
Alright, very high quality.
Is it a stained wood, or is it a colored wood? The wood back?
Alright, hold on. Okay. Alright, here we go. Oh, a lot of hands, a lot of hands. All for this? Alright, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, yeah, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36. Is that 37? Am I got that right? Alright, um, yeah, we'll put down 37. That seems like a good...
For all the other people that did not vote for Dart, how about light? How many people are up there?
Alright, cool, keep them up, keep them up. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. Is that it? Is that it? 13, I think, we got Miss Rard in the back. Cool.
And your mother.
13? Alright.
Alright, and lastly, is there any other questions anybody can share?
Will there be a possibility in the future of doing different size frames?
Definitely. I mean, like if, if we finish all of these and like, there's, because we still have a whole quarter to do. If we have time, we're sure.
Summer due.
We did make these though, like these hinges, they'll bend out a little bit, so they'll fit someone with a... I mean, if they're, I don't know if they could really small head. These are kind of...
But just like, like the lens itself, like that part of it?
Um, yeah, we could look into that, definitely.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
You've got a prototype to go with.
How about bifocals?
Yes, we've discussed that with our teachers as well.
Sunglass readers.
So you did this just in a spirit class, and you do it after a class?
Yeah, we put in a little overpass.
So this class for us is fourth period. So right after that, almost is, obviously not today, because it was early release. But Core is right after our class. So a lot of times, a lot of the kids stay after class and get some extra work in.
What happens when they're flying off the shelves and the school year ends?
I mean, if they are flying off the shelves, the money's coming in. I mean, I always...
How to solve the money?
Depends on how hard they're flying off shelves.
Does the school get a cut?
Um, I'm pretty sure that's where all are.
Another good answer, another good answer.
Solve the budget problem.
It's the boy they're from.
Well, thank you, guys.
Nice job, guys.
Well done.
We have a list of tools, I guess, instructional tools. I believe it's on the website. If not, I can make sure it's up there. But this, as the boys pointed out, this was the generosity of a summer visitor who came. I met him, and, and he said, hey, any way I can help you guys? And I said, well, yeah. And, and he helped out in part with the laser printer. But Chip and the other folks that have worked with the STEM, the STEAM materials and instruction, they have a list of other things that they would like to get purchased for them and for their projects. We do, I'm not sure if you all know, but there is a section on the website that talks about the BREF. The BREF is the Booth Bay Region Educational Fund. And it is a fully certified 501(c)(3). So any donations that are made to that, to the BREF, and if you make them restrict them to technology equipment, they would go straight to purchase this, this kind of equipment. This thing was, the laser printer that they bought, the laser cutter, wasn't very cheap. It was like $17,000. So I believe the things that Chip has on the list, they're relatively expensive. I mean, this technology stuff is pretty darn expensive. But, you know, putting, putting money together in the form of the BREF and then restricting it for technology purposes for the high school STEAM program, it would all go toward anything on that list. So, throw that out there. I got somebody asked me the other day, do we have an organization where we can donate? And he didn't know anything about it. I said, no, here's the link, and here's this information. It was kind of defunct for a while, but we brought it back to life. We wrote the charter, and we have officers of the association, of the, of the foundation. So it's, it's alive and running.
But I just want to reiterate what Keith, the fund for the technology, but also just for folks that may not be familiar. I came up here with a gentleman, and we went to the technology with STEM, with the STEM class. And Keith, and Dan took us to the class and showed the stuff being, the laser printer being used. So, I mean, it's great for folks that may be on TV, may be here that aren't familiar. But I mean, it's a great thing if you could go and just watch, and these kids do it. I mean, it gives them great confidence, and they're, they're very good at it. Plus, you see the other different avenues that they're doing in the class besides just with the laser printer. It's, you know, it's a, and Dan's great at taking people into it. And we didn't even give him a notice. So if you give him a notice, I know he'll work it into his schedule.
We don't need much of a notice. We love to have visitors, so anytime, please.
Thank you.
And next, we'll go to, moved H4 up to the next order of business is the out-of-district students and sports teams. What this came about was with baseball, we've had, we're trying to get the schools, trying to get the numbers up for it, trying to get as many kids involved with the program at a young age as well as going up to the high school. So, I mean, Peggy, if you want to mention anything about it. But we had this issue a few years ago about out-of-district kids coming in to play baseball. We made the decision that as long as it did not be a cut, if it was not a cut team, that we would have that approval. But we didn't put it in as a policy. So it's come up again this year. There's been some out-of-district kids that want to play on our baseball team in the elementary school. Mark's been approached, Dan's been approached. And I spoke to a lot of people, Keith. A lot of the kids that we have, they don't, the reason they want to come here and play baseball is because where they are, baseball is not offered. So, you know, as far as the board, I think there's a consensus for us that it is, it is approval. It's included into a policy as long as there's not a cut to kids within our district. If there is a cut limit on it, then the kids in our district get priority over kids that would be coming in from outside the district.
And then be for all sports?
All sports.
Yep.
So if any other, anyone has any comment regarding that? But that's an issue that we wanted to clear up for everyone because it has been, you know, it's been a question. Like I said, we had it probably five to 10 years ago. I can't remember. But we did not have it in a, as a policy. So now we have it. So it's easier for, if anyone has that question, we go to that.
And it's, it's extremely helpful if it's a sixth or seventh grader that's thinking about coming to our middle school, and then onto our high school. It's a way to get them in the door to meet some kids, feel comfortable in the environment. So we thought that was a win.
Great, so I think we have a consensus that we can let that.
You do.
That's it.
Yep.
So, thank you, everyone. And next, we have communications. Keith, you can probably give us that.
Sure, the most, I think, the main trust, the anthem insurance for the teachers and administrators and staff. For the second year in a row, zero increase. So well done for staying healthy, teachers and administrators. That, that could have been up as high as 7%. And the other schools, the other districts and the other school departments in this district, they all came in at 3. So all small schools across the state were at 3. But Booth Bay's at 0. So congratulations, and that helps. That's two years in a row that our health insurance benefits did not increase. Our costs did not increase, which means the teachers' costs remain the same too. Yeah. Teachers, administrators.
Next, we have public participation. I just want to make, I assume everyone is here probably, if they haven't left already, they're here for the budget process. We're gonna, you can have public participation now. When there's not going to be a vote for the budget tonight. We're not prepared for that. We have some, we were directed, we directed the administrators and superintendent ladies to come up with some financial cuts that are not easy for anyone. We don't, but with a increase in the budget, we felt that it was prudent that we had to address some of the issues and look at our budget so that we could be responsible to the students, the teachers, and the public. So, like I said, we're not going to vote on the budget tonight. Public participation, if anyone would like to have comments right now, we appreciate it now. Because once we get into the budget process, we don't want it to have reiteration of comments. So if anyone would like to comment now?
You gotta limit the time.
And yes, and you know, and if, if we find that it's gonna be reiteration, like I said, we'll limit the time to it because we can probably get the gist of, of the comments. So start with Mark, I guess.
Yes, thank you very much. So at the March school committee meeting, I brought up the fact that unfortunately, there's been a spate of cyberbullying of many students as well as for staff members. And I, I realize that you probably can't go into any details, but we haven't heard any updates on the investigation. And I'd also like to know if you can tell us more about the board's plans to address this problem, since it probably will occur in the future.
Well, I mean, I think the last meeting, when you asked it, you did get an update on the investigation. And I think that was a pretty good synopsis of the, of the investigation from what, Dan, I don't know if you can give us any other?
No, I mean, to my knowledge, there haven't been any further instances. But you know, after an extensive investigation, the administration feels we've gone as far as we can with the information we have. Certainly, if we get any new information, we're willing to open it back up. But we, we got as far as we could, unfortunately. This is not an easy, easy problem to delve into. So we put in a tremendous amount of hours, and certainly wasn't for lack of trying, but we hit kind of a, a brick wall, so.
Okay. And as far as the process, I mean, I've talked to Peggy, and it is something that we had hoped there was, that we could address it sooner than later. It may be after tonight, we may be able to get a committee together to do it, to have, have a process to see what can be done. Like I said, we've talked to our lawyers, and there's not too much that's, that we can undo. But we understand the importance of bullying, cyberbullying of teachers and of kids. So it's not, it's a, it's a whole gamut of bullying. And it's something that we feel should be addressed to students and faculty, or how bullying can affect everyone. So we do realize it. I wanna, I would hope maybe next meeting we can put that on our agenda to get a committee together so that we can address it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robyn Jordan. I'm a resident of Booth Bay. And I'll just have a short statement. I am past having children in a school system, but the vitality and the enrichment that students experience is critical to the well-being of this community. For excellent education, there must be a breadth of choices in this school system. I fully support how important it is for the schools to meet the learning needs and provide excellent opportunities for students who are heading to careers in the trades. Equally important is a gifted and talented program for those who seek it. Having a full-time teacher at the high school attracts those looking to reside here and retain students. It would be especially ironic to cut our GT teacher position in half after two Booth Bay Region High School students worked together collaboratively with the guidance of their GT teacher, created a sophisticated project, went to the state science fair, and won a first place. This achievement then provided each student the opportunity of a full tuition paid four-year college education within the state of Maine. Now, it seems to me, it clearly is not the time to cut this position in half. And I have a second statement from another resident, and I have distributed the copies to the members here. Dear school committee members, as a former gifted and talented leader, and also a parent of a former participant elsewhere, this individual is writing. I was disappointed to see that consideration was being given to making the gifted and talented position at the high school a part-time position. To me, this is a clear signal to everyone, including current students, parents, prospective students, and parents in the community in general, that the school feels the gifted and talented program does not have sufficient value to warrant a full-time investment. Having personally experienced it, I know the value of a full gifted and talented program from both the giving and receiving side. I am sure the committee will carefully consider their actions in this matter. Thank you, Louise Cowan.
Any other comments regarding the gifted and talented? Sure.
Sorry, let me see again. Hi, so my name is Mary Lyons. I'm alumni at Booth Bay Region High School, along with my sister. And my son is in kindergarten. And I would like to share with you all my experience, the lack of gifted and talented for my family. So myself, I was not earmarked for gifted and talented at all, ever. I did enough to get along. I dropped out of high school, my, the end of my sophomore year, due to family issues. I dropped out of high school, my, the end of my sophomore year, due to family issues. And I was allowed to walk out. Nobody stopped me. Nobody reached out to me. I was allowed to leave. I became emancipated, and I fell into a bad crowd. I did drugs, I drank, before I even turned eighteen. And I'm a successful adult now, but the damage that I did at that time was huge. When I came back to school my senior year and said, "Hey, guidance counselor, I'm ready to come graduate." And he tells me, "Well, where are you gonna put your study hall?" How can I do that? I, I'm gonna graduate this year. And he's like, "Hmm, I thought you were gonna go for the five-year plan." So, when I went to school in Booth Bay in 2000, there was a five-year plan for students offered, which is shocking to me. I graduated on time. I took ten classes my senior year. I assisted in teaching the adult education program for English during that time. Instead of taking the class, I ended up help tutoring it. I worked full-time, and I cared for my mother at home, all in that same year. If that's not gifted and talented, I don't know what is. My sister, on the other side of the coin, was not identified for gifted and talented. She became a delinquent. She was arrested. She stole things all the time. She was a menace to everybody at the school. And in her sophomore year, I'm not sure what precipitated it, but she was able to take her SATs early, and she almost scored a perfect score. And she was sent to MSSM, where she was really successful. But she still continues to suffer for the emotional impact that her behavior as a child put out in this community. I actually ended up moving away in my mid twenties, because my career was going nowhere, because they heard the last name Lyons, they equated it with my sister, and I didn't get jobs. I didn't get promotions. And the impact is huge. Right now, her oldest son is in gifted and talented program in Georgia. Her second oldest child has been skipped up a grade, from second to third grade. Her third child is now I for gifted and talented. And I have been reached out for my kindergartner to be in the gifted and talented program. Prior to that, in the first three weeks of pre-K, we were reached out for a CDS assessment, and we were asked to label a child, my son, with autism. My son does not have autism. He is gifted and talented, and he is bored, and he is spending his time distracting other students, instead of being focused and engaged and challenged. So, we agreed to give the autism label, so that he could have one-on-one specialized time with a special education teacher. I'm grateful for that. I'm so glad that they helped me with that. But that is not where my son needs to be. He needs specialized time with a gifted and talented teacher. This cut will not allow time for my child to enter that program, and I'm gonna get emotional, because I cannot see my son grow up like I did and like my sister did. I can't. And I assure you that my property taxes are not so high that I'm not willing to pay more, much more, if that means we can have a gifted and talented program. Please, do not cut this position. We need it.
This position is not on the X.
Cutting it in half means my son will not be part of the program until who knows when. And I don't know if he's gonna make it. I don't know, we're gonna make it. We're going crazy at home with his behavior, his emotional and his physical outbursts.
Yeah, we wanna just make that clear for all of us. There is no point that, to cut it in half. I don't know where the, the budget, the money is in there, it's just in two different places. So, that if there is, if it became an opportunity to use it in one spot, if there was a teaching position, if there was a class, like you said, for the, for the science kid, if there was a particular class, then that could be used for that. There's no, I apologize for not making it clear before.
It's our understanding that the current gifted and talented teacher's time will be split between a regular teaching position in science and a gifted and talented position that she has now.
No.
No, I don't know where that was. No one's contacted me about it, because if they contacted me, I would tell you no. And everyone else, I thought we made it clear at our last meeting.
Well, I mean, I, we have, I work two jobs. I'm clearly here after working a job. I can't make every meeting. My other thing that I want to import is that, in the community, I hear all over and over again, what can we do to help the opioid crisis? What we can do is engage kids who are troubled, who need more help focusing their energy and time, so that when they leave the classroom, they aren't turning to drugs, to quiet that busy mind that they have, and spend their energy on that. And so, I just really hope that, whatever budget you guys decide, that you allow a full-time gifted and talented teacher at both the high school and the elementary school. And that's all the time I'll take.
And I just wanna, you know, with what you've, it'd be commented for what you've overcome in, in being a parent and, and, but, you know, and it's great that you're sharing that experience, because Janet Sprague, you know, with the last meeting, it was, it was, I don't know if it was broadcast on TV, but we realize the importance of, you know, not everyone can go to school Monday through Friday at a regular schedule. But our guidance counselors and advisors have really made it a point to go in and increase the numbers of people that can get a high school education. It may not be the traditional education that everyone has, but it works for you.
Right.
So, I kinda wanna address, and I think, Steph and everyone, address the gifted and talented, that it's not been cut in half. It's still there. It's just gives us, gives the administrators leeway. If there was, if she was approached to teach a class, then that could be done. And Dan, if there's anything you have to add, you can. But also, it gives us a point to go with the guidance. I mean, if you, the numbers that we've increased of kids that were at risk, that are continuing their education this year compared to the past, it's just, it's, it's gone up, I think, ten, fifteen kids.
Yeah, I mean, we, we try to be, oh, Emily. Oh, sorry, it wasn't my place to call someone. Whoops.
No, Dan, I, no, I do wanna ask you first, just because it'll kind of piggyback on that.
Yeah, I mean, we always, we're always trying to, to be flexible to meet students' needs. I mean, we're a small school, we're a supportive community, I mean, that's the kind of school we are here. And we always try to find unique approaches to giving students what their needs are, whether it is through programming here during the daytime, evenings, whatnot. I have had a conversation with Emily today. I think she's comfortable with where we are, but I don't wanna speak with her, for her either, so.
I think that it's important to realize that people's idea of where the fifty percent gifted teacher came from is from your budget line and from prior meetings. Moving past that statement, I've communicated to Dan on multiple occasions, including this morning, we had a nice chat this morning, that you can have somebody be a full-time gifted and talented teacher in the state of Maine, and he or she can spend ten percent of her time doing things with students that are not identified as gifted. So, you could have the budget be the same, which we spend a lot of time talking about something that saves nobody any money, because it still costs the same, no matter what I do. That I can also be listed and have a contract for being a full-time gifted and talented teacher and still teach a class, because presumably, the class would approximately be one-sixth of my teaching time, which is usually how high school classes are calculated. There would probably be students who are identified in the class as gifted and talented, which would make the time approximately one-tenth of my time. It's in state law, it's under the section that relates to gifted and talented education. And I think it's important for you guys to realize that. Thank you for listening, Chris.
Thank you, Emma.
Kevin Anthony, Booth Bay. We're all here because, of course, we care about the schools and the kids and stuff, but the fundamental thing here, guys, is that our student population is going down. And the only way we're gonna get it to go back up, I think, is to make the schools look more attractive, not less attractive, to families that are thinking about moving in, and families that are here. And that's what you need to think about during this budget process. We need to make it more attractive, not less. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think any of us are trying to make it. If you're gonna, if you're gonna be cutting a lot of positions, it's gonna look less attractive. No, we are not. Oh, Hildy?
Um, Hildy Johnson, teacher, Booth Bay taxpayer. I think it's important for the public to know that the increases in the budget are due to the renovations to the schools, the brick and mortar of the schools, but they will affect the programs at, at the schools if you have to cut. But I think it's important that the people, the public know that it isn't because of the programs or the teachers that that's why it's gone up. It's due to the things that have to be done to the schools to make them healthy and safe for people to be in them. I'm also hoping that the current budget will be presented to the communities as is, so then the communities, you know, the voters can vote whether or not they will accept it the way it is, or we have to go back to the drawing board. I think that's important. Before you even decide to cut, I think the voters need to be, give them the chance to say yay or nay, and then you cut. I mean, I, we've seen Edgcombe have to go through that numerous times in years past. But again, I think it's important that the public knows, know that, the public know that it really are, it's the bricks and mortars that are costing us this time around.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Mark? Sorry, Bruce?
If it's public, I just had a question on gifted and talented when it was a public.
Do you want to do?
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
Okay. As you look at possible cuts to the, to the, to the budget, there are so many wonderful programs. A lot of what people are talking about is making our schools attractive to people to move to here, which makes wonderful sense. And as we heard from the high school students at the beginning, there are some wonderful things happening in our high school. And a lot of times, those are the things that are most visible, as well as special programming like gifted and talented, our music and art programs, those sorts of things. But I want to remind you too, to, to keep in mind that the things that aren't as visible sometimes, such as early learning and our early grades, and literacy specialists at the elementary school, those are very critical. And they're not very, outside of that classroom, it's not very jazzy necessarily, unless you walk down that hallway and you can see all the wonderful things those kids are doing. But it, it's still critical. And especially small class sizes at that level are very helpful for a lot of best practices, especially in literacy, suggest that you spend a good deal of time working with students in small groups and one-on-one, in order to differentiate for their individual needs and meet the needs of those diverse learners in your classroom. At that level, a lot of times, kids, you know, in kindergarten, they, they start out, their writing is illustrating, and then they have random strings of letters. And then they eventually make it to the point where they're connecting those letters to sounds, and they might be able to write the first letter in a word. And then with teacher's help, they can hear some more sounds and write more letters. But that takes a lot of that teacher being there with each student close beside them to help them. And when you get into large classes at that level, that's not possible, really. So, I just want you to kind of, to keep in mind those kinds of things. And if, if ever you want to see what early literacy looks like and why it's so important to have small groups, you are welcome to come into my room, and I'm sure probably a lot of other people would welcome you in too.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, us as a board, we are, we're not, you know, we realize the importance of the education of the children and of trying to attract new kids. So, I mean, any cuts that we have, we don't, we have no plans on adding teacher staff and classes. So, we just, we wanna make that clear. You know, we, we're going through a process where the administrators and Dr. Lazer come up with some ideas for us, but I think as a consensus for us, is we, there's, we don't want to be eliminating positions and classroom, and programs in a class that are benefiting students.
That's great.
So.
Just trying to clean up the waste.
Yeah, we're just, you know, we're just trying to be efficient. Kathy?
Well, I guess I'm very glad to hear that, because we have been, under the assumption, I'm a heavily hearted fourth-grade teacher, that when, for instance, our colleague Jean Koochie is retiring, that it's been very highly considered that she won't be replaced. So, that instead of having two, two third grades, two fourth grades, we would have to do a consolidation, which would be horrific. As Lisa Sharp indicated, the smaller class size is essential with early development, particularly literacy, so they can get to the high school and do all these and these and things. If we want to attract people to this area, small school size is, is just so crucial. So, I really hope that what I just heard perhaps is, perhaps a rumor that we heard before, because if indeed, we are not going to replace a classroom teacher that was going to be.
Yeah. And it's like with anything, Kathy, you hear one part of the rumor, but you don't hear the other part of it. You know, there's, there's a whole, there's, so, when we get to our process, you'll see what we have, but we don't just win and cut a class, that, you know, there's, there's an idea or a process to go if it's not to be filled. It's like, you know, whenever we've had a reduction, when a teacher was retired, we've looked around to see what we can do with the teachers within the building, you know, and we'll probably, we'll be referring to the building principal to see what the plan is for that. So, I mean, if it's gonna adversely affect the students and, you know, the board probably will, would definitely listen to what everyone's saying.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just gonna clarify. So, we were under the impression, so you can call it fiction or fact, that we were asked, people were looking at cutting $500,000 from the high school and elementary budget. That was, that was a probe? That was a task? What was?
No, that's what, when we had our meeting, we said, we wanted to get, we said, let's have a, have what it would look like if it was that.
What it would look like if we cut $500,000?
Right, but that doesn't mean $500,000 is being cut.
Right, but that was, well, certainly, people are looking down the road, especially if you're a new teacher and you are.
Oh, and we understand the value of new teachers, but we just, we had to get that.
You have to start something.
We got a number to have to work from and then work down.
So, that's where the, it's not really rumor then. It's really just a probe that was sent out to investigate, what would it look like to cut $500,000?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there were numbers, and then that's for us. So, it wasn't like we want to cut $500,000.
Some of you were at the joint meeting that we had with the trustees, and the trustees and we both agreed to look at both of our budgets, just to be fiscally prudent. And then, probably there was some miscommunication that got out there that said, "We are going to do this." That isn't what we said. We said, "Come back and tell us what it would look like if, if we were gonna cut $500,000." Because the numbers are going up, the kids are going down, and it's prudent upon us to, all right, she's looking at, put the costs out, but I guess maybe some or other got hit.
I think, I think so. You know, anyone, we can understand it. Anyone can say, "Here's $500," you're gonna say, "Oh, jeez, they wanna cut $500,000 from." But I'm glad you, you could've called me and I could've told you. But that's not, we just started, you know? Like we said, that's the starting point, see what it looks like, and comes down. We're here, we're here because we want good education for the kids, and, but we also wanna be prudent to the taxpayers. So, that's why we started at $500, see what that gets us to. And I can tell you, that's not gonna, it's not gonna get there. You know, I, I mean, I can think, everyone can shake their heads and say, "That's, we aren't gonna be there."
You're not gonna vote on it tonight. Voting on it next week.
No, right, there's no, like I said, there's no voting on the budget tonight, but this is a.
We would've been remiss if we didn't at least investigate the cuts to bring us down to what our normal budgets look like. And that's why we asked the administrators to do a really hard thing and go back and come up with some of those cuts. We never intended to make all of those cuts. But when you have a senior citizen who doesn't have a child in the school system, and they say, "Why is my bill going up by ten percent or eight percent or whatever it ends up being?" What did you do to look at those cuts? We now have an answer. We looked, and they would hurt children. But we needed that ability to collect data, to make an informed decision. Does that make sense? That was our intent, at least, was to have an informed decision. Thank you.
Does that clarify any other questions? Okay. Any other questions? All right. Now, Faith is probably at practice.
I think she's tied up.
Is she?
They're tying up a lot of kids tonight, yeah.
And so, we can, Special Services Technology. Ms. Smith?
I'll start with technology. We have gone through the process of applying for E-Rate. We've selected a bid, and it's with Gudrow Technology, which is a local, was a local bid, and I think there'll be advantages to having somebody that we can call in a pinch. We're still waiting to hear, you know, what, what we'll get for E-Rate. The bids came in for BRES at 22,594. Looking at what E-Rate usually does, they pay seventy percent for a school like ours as far as size and number of students on free and reduced lunch. So, out of that 22,5, our part would be less than 7,000. The high school is just a little over 11,000, and that being said, thirty percent of that would be about 3,400, so.
What's this money, what's that money for?
Basically, updating the infrastructure. So, we're looking at replacing switches, and the lower bid came with a different product, where we're not gonna pay for, so every wireless access point before and every switch, you'd have to pay for basically a five-year contract, like a service contract. And doing it that way really raised your price. We went with something called Ubiquity, a unified company, and you're, you're paying for the product, we could pay for the product and have half a dozen extra products to replace anything that went defective for the same price as the, the next level, which was like Meraki, Cisco, we looked at several.
So, this is all internet access?
Internet access, yes.
Any questions for Lisa?
Do you wanna talk about her position at all? About what we decided last night?
Yeah.
I quit.
You're fired.
You excelled in your recognition.
Yeah, we, just to let Lisa know, she'll be the last year, she'll be a technology coordinator. We realized that she's been doing us a very big service and favor by being the technology coordinator as well as special ed director. And we realized with the amount of work that it takes for the special ed, and we also know the amount of work it takes for a technology coordinator, she's been kind of burning the candles at both ends. So, we found a way to fill the technology position, to take that off Lisa's plate, so that she could focus on, on to special ed. Dr. Lazer can just realize, made it a point to us how much work she was doing for special ed, and they came up with a way to fill the position, so she could just focus on special ed as opposed to sharing it with the technologies. I think, you know, as a board, we wanna thank you for, you gave us an update on special ed, but you gave us quite an update on technology too, so.
Well, Louise. I'm still calling you on stocks.
I can't see you taking your foot off the gas anymore.
Yeah.
But, thank you, Lisa.
They're in car though.
Anything else?
As far as special ed, we're at about twenty-three percent of, of our students are receiving services and looking to meet the needs of our kids. Every day, we have an excellent staff that, that really works hard to, to meet the needs of our students.
All right, couple of things that have gone on and are going to be going. All right, a couple of things that have gone on and are going to be going on in the near future. You know, I told you a few weeks ago that we were in our MEA testing window, that window ends Friday, and that includes the makeups. As of today, I was told there were two students left that have to do makeups. Zach Gray has done an outstanding job making that happen and run smoothly in the school. Unfortunately, when we come back from April break, we have to start our grade five and eight science MEAs, and that window will last for two weeks, last week of April and into the first week in May. Whenever we get those results, I will bring them to you, so you can see how we did. Again, that's, the regular MEAs are for students in grades three through eight in language arts and math. Another thing...
Yes, same little question, all right, how much time does that take out of teaching? And how do we use those results?
Say that one more time.
How much time is all that testing taking out of teaching and learning? And what use are the results?
Well, that's kind of a loaded question, so, I'm going to, I'm going to give you the best answer I can. You know, number one, we're required to take it, so we do. I believe the tests, depending at which level you're, you're at, each one is scheduled for, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's like 90 minutes per test. Zach?
Yes, a total for each student is scheduled for, it's, I think it's four hour, 470 minutes of testing.
Okay.
For, and they do it in a week, it's seven sessions, most of the sessions are anywhere from, the shortest is 35, the longest is 80. But it takes the whole week for the students, pretty much, doing two tests a week, two tests a day.
And that's all they recommend is that you give two tests a day, because otherwise it'd be too much, you know, in particular when you're using, or when you're, you know, testing third graders.
It's a week out of the school year?
Say that again.
It's a week out of the school year, is that what I heard?
Uh, per grade testing level, yes.
For the given kid?
Yes.
For that test.
And those test results are used how?
Well, one of the things that it would be nice is if they would get them to us sooner. Last year we were told that they were going to be coming in in the summer, we didn't get them until October. You know, we take the data and look at it, we look at strengths and weaknesses. I compare it to the NWA testing that we do, they're not the exact same tests, the results don't look exactly the same. You know, so we look at it and use it as one tool for assessing where we are with math and language arts. Science, you know, our science teachers are great, we kill that every year, I mean by a lot, we kill that. Yahoo.
I share your frustration, I think we all do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not blaming you or the staff, I know you're going to group, but somehow they get out of this.
Yeah.
But hopefully something that could give us, like, the way to do immediate response.
What Kathy was saying was the state is moving away from this, so...
Yes.
From what you said last meeting, he talked to the commissioner, and the commissioner, you know, is hoping that we do away with a lot of this and just use the new E-A as a test, because that's the one that we, the commissioner is on board with how much time it takes, and, you know, that's the test they get the most feedback from in the time in the end. So, hopefully we won't be having the discussion, we'll just be having the discussion about new E-A within the next year.
Which I think, can the staff attest to you, you like the new E-A much better and it gives you...
I think it's a more accurate portrayal, you know, depending on the effort that the, the students put in, but, but I think it's a more accurate portrayal and you get it immediately.
I know the kids like that they can see it as well, immediately.
And that's nationally normed, so we know how we're doing against people all across the country.
You're also able to see the validity of the results in terms of a child that isn't able to attend for whatever reason, you're able to note whether the child only engaged in, in the exam for, you know, 10 minutes versus being engaged in, and it may perhaps having more valid responses to the child's actual ability. So, I, I think it's that immediate sort of, both in the observation and then the results.
Any other questions?
No, I think we had a big discussion about it last week, every week, you know, we realized the impact it is on the students and on the staff, so, you know, it's our, hopefully the commissioner takes this and runs, but that's, that would just add the new E-A.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
The next thing I have to share with you, the secretary at my school, Lisa Tilton, I know she's right here, so I won't. I was going to call her a miser. She's the one that is in, in charge of taking care of basically all the money that goes through BRES, and she's always looking for deals on things that can be beneficial to teachers at no cost. She has more juggling things in the air than I've ever seen, but we tried a new thing this year. Lisa had found this, it's an online company, it's called schoolmall.com, and she came to me and said, "I looked this up, looks legit, you know, do you mind if I give it a try?" So, you know, looking to get anything for free, we did that. And what happens is, is you, you are part of their campaign, they send flyers to people, you know, usually parents and things like that, community members, and those people can go online and they can sign up to either donate to or purchase things for specific teachers' classrooms. And I'm able to report that, I think it was a week ago, we got a memo from the company saying that over $1,000 in gift cards had been purchased in the names of our teachers, and also an additional $500 came to us from people doing this. The one catch with it is, is you can't take that gift card and go to Walmart, you have to do it with their company. But, you know, it's, it's things that, again, teachers don't have to purchase using their own money, so, you know, they say...
How did you get it out there so quickly, Lisa?
You get one out for?
For, I mean, $1,500 is quite a bit in a week.
Actually, it was like a three-day process, the children took on the book, the parents filled out addresses, and that was it.
Well done.
Next thing, I'm going to move on, I'm going to talk a little bit about Emily Higgins. She is, she came to me a little while ago and said, "What do you think about me taking a field trip with some of the GD kids?" I said, "Well, you know, where's it going to be, what are you going to do?" And she said, "There's some kids that want to see the, want to see a organ, pipe organ." So, Emily told me there's one down at Merrill Auditorium, and the week after April break, I think it's on a Thursday, she's going to take 14 kids down there to the Merrill Auditorium to see this thing, and, you know, you think, "Oh yeah, just an organ," well, it's, it plays a total of, I think, eight different types of tones. You know, you can, you can look at it from an artistic standpoint, you can look at it from an engineering standpoint. This is an organ that was built in, I believe, 1911 and donated to Portland. At that time, it was the second biggest pipe organ in the world, and I don't know if you've ever had an opportunity to hear one of those, but they're really quite magical, and I think it's just a, a great opportunity for our kids. And it's not one where I would have ordinarily thought, "Hmm, let's send a bunch of kids down, have them see a pipe organ," but that's, that's Emily thinking that way for it, so... Next couple of things I have for you, last Saturday, Mrs. O'Connell took, I believe it was four of our students to the District Three Honors Festival, that was held up at Coney High School, and Mrs. O'Connell told me, you know, she's been doing this a long time, I think like 30 years, something like that. She said, "This was the most outstanding concert that she has ever heard."
I cried, I cried. It was, it was truly to, to, to recognize and to celebrate and, and to witness the talent in our state, it was overwhelming. To see these young kids, these are 12, 13, 14-year-olds, it was awe-inspiring, I, I got to tell you, and I was so proud of our school.
They put this together basically in one day, and then the next day, they have this concert. Tricia had recorded it on her phone and she came back and played it for me, and I'm not typically a crier, but I'm telling you, it moved you when you, when you heard this, you know, it sounded professional, and it was worked together in that amount of time, and, you know, it was, it, it just reflects well in our kids because this isn't something you're just given a spot in and you go, you have to audition and you have to be accepted. And year after year after year, we have kids that are, are participants in that, so, good job to them. The last thing I'm going to share with you is kind of a, a combination of several different teachers. I'm going to call it my grade eight project, but it really is between the Cory Chase Language Arts, eighth grade, Soren Barker, eighth grade Social Studies, and again, a little bit of Emily Higgins. They're doing a unit now, well, they've been doing it for a, a little while, the, in the language arts class, the students are reading Ice Story, which is the adventure or tale of Ernest Shackelford. And, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with that part of history, but, you know, he, he was up in the Arctic, and the ship he was on, he, he took three trips actually, but one of the, the middle trip, I believe it was, his ship became encased in ice, it got crushed and sunk. So, here you get this guy and his men out there floating around on ice, and they had little tiny 20-foot boats with them, and they ended up, once the ice melted underneath them, they got into these boats, they sailed 700 miles up in some pretty rough territory until they came to an island that was inhabited, and, and basically they were saved. Well, what they've done in the classroom is they mapped out on the floor of the classroom, you know, the shape of a 20-foot boat, so the kids could get an idea of just how small that really is. You know, when you're talking about sailing something like that into the worst conditions, you know, it's, it's, it gives them an idea of how scary that situation was. And then the next thing is Emily Higgins said, "Well, you know, at the boat yard downtown, they're rehabbing some boats, and some of those boats were boats that had been up in the Arctic around the same time period that Shackleton was there." So, this Friday, the eighth grade, along with Cory, and I'm not sure if Soren's going with them or not, but they're going to go down and, and look at those boats. So, again, I think it's an opportunity, you know, several years ago, big, big push for like expeditionary learning, and I tried telling people, "We do it, we just don't call it that." This is another great example of, of that being done, where kids get to actually go out and see things that were historically there at the time these things happened, so, that's all I have to share with you tonight, and I'll answer any questions for you. I just thought you know it's one boat? It, it is one boat? It's the Bowden? Okay, so I thought I heard something about like the... I won't be there Friday, but yes, no. All right, it must have been the other little boats. Yeah, so it's about the Mumbai.
There's another one, there's...
Well, not by, it's not, well, there's, there's, there's the Ernestina, which had been to the island, which is owned by the state of Massachusetts. Yeah, that's what I heard, was that name, so I assumed...
There'd be a lot of them there Windjammer days.
Right.
Yeah. But, I mean, I, you know, I need the teachers and the students to go down there, I mean, if I... I think it's a great learning experience for them. Okay, Trish?
So, I'll be brief tonight, this is just a copy, and I, it doesn't have a picture other than the state symbol here. Shield, so, last year we spent a lot of time, and I think we updated you along the process, Lisa Sharp is here and deserves great acknowledgement for her hard work, but all the schools across the state were required to complete the comprehensive needs assessment, and that's where we took a lot of data, we collected a lot of statistics about our school and our population, and then from that information, we had to analyze instructional practices and support services and interventions that we use across our school, our pre-pay through eighth school. And it was also, we did it, we wrote it as a CSD, so it also included the high school. And out of that, we had to look at where we were at and assess, what do we need, where do we need to be? And again, this was a requirement across the state for all schools. So, we took that information, we met numerous times throughout the year, and then all that was brought together, and we determined what do we have, what are our areas of strength? And so this is just, I just went in and cut and paste, so you could see BRES, we identified, and I'm sure you all saw this last year, we identified what are areas of strength in our school, and then what are possible steps that we can continue to take or to, you know, push ourselves beyond to continue in those areas of strengths. And then from that, we also identified what are our areas of needs, and from that, we then developed goals. And so this year, each year, this is a five-year plan that has been laid out, and we had sent it, submitted to the state. It was approved by the state, all schools, again, were required to do that, ours was approved fairly quickly. Again, there was an enormous amount of work went into this, and the professional development that I've updated you on throughout the year, the focus on a lot of that work and targeted work was based on the needs that we identified as a result of this work. And so when you review the goals, which is what we're doing now, we're assessing where we're at and what we need to look at for next year, again, this is a five-year process. So, I just wanted to check in, we're also reviewing, right now, we're collecting data, to update data each year now for, the, over the next four years now, we will continue to update data such as our testing results, crews, our population, our staffing, and continue to, to use that to reflect on, okay, what's needs? Are the changes we're seeing with our statistics and our data, our population, our, our staff, our test results, is that reflective in our strengths, is that reflective in our progress towards our goals? So, we are in the process now of updating that, but just to let you know, it continues to be work that we do, and I'm very grateful to all those that participate and put in the work to do that because it's important to always stop in education, we know reflection is key, to stop and reflect and assess and then replan and move forward, and we have incredible folks that do just that every day, and we're very grateful for that. I also just want to let you know, it hasn't been a focus because there's been so much talk on the budget, but I will simply just sort of bring it up again, I think in December I let you know that we were rewarded, awarded, I should say, $25,000 as part of a grant that I wrote. Last year, we completed what I referred to as Phase One in our playground project, which was initiated by our PTO, and, but I said, you know, "We're not done," and, and, and please know we're sincere and we say that this is Phase One of a two-phase project. So, having been rewarded that, those grant funds, I have been looking at and working with Abe Benner and meeting with the design folks that we work with for our playground, Eric Wetzel and his group in Brunswick, and I am hopeful that we will be able to, with those funds, update our playground Phase Two for our third through eighth grade students. It's not money that impacts the budget, so I didn't want it to be complicated, but I am ever enthusiastic, as are all the folks that have participated in that, and it's a result of volunteers and commitment to provide our kids with the best that we can. So, that is, continues to be in progress, and I think it's, it's important to just let you know that's ongoing. And I also want to bring up, because you mentioned Friday, a field trip, we do have, I want to thank the local Rotary Group and the Harbor Theater, they continue to look for opportunities to connect with our students, and we are having our pre-pay, our K through second grade, excuse me, K through second grade are going as a celebration for Earth Day, they are going and attending the movies on Friday morning to see, oh my gosh, I just...
The Lorax.
Thank you, the Lorax, just look, the Lorax. So, we, we want to say thank you to them, because it's very appreciated.
Any questions, Trish? Thanks.
Thank you.
Antifist, well, okay, I will try to be brief this evening as well. Though it's been well-publicized, obviously folks have heard about our science fair winners. Congratulations to Blake Arard and Lily Harris for bringing home first place in their division at the state science fair. If you hadn't heard, that does come with an awarding of tuition to the University of Maine at Orano. Aside from that, and automatic entrance to their honors college, and the chance to do, get involved in research at University of Maine. And if you're not aware, UMaine has some outstanding research facilities for students, and it can be tough for students to get it, get their foot in the door in those departments, so just a great job to them, wonderful, wonderful, you know, job, that was just, just great, just another great source of pride for our school. Yeah, our math team came in third at the Central Maine Math League. Mr. Gilchrist said, you know, the, the team really came through, we graduated a lot of seniors, so it was a pretty underclassmen laden team, and they did a great job and really came through at the end. Will Perkins came in second, I believe, at that meet, so congratulations to him. Our German class spent a day at Colby College for Sprockfest. Uh, German class spent a day at Colby College for Sprockfest last week.
What?
That's what I said. Apparently it's, it's, uh, bringing together other, um, German classes from around the state, and they do contests and games, and they award prizes and medals. And I saw a lot of happy kids coming off the bus with, with, with medals around their neck, including our student from Germany, who for some reason did really good in a lot of these contests. So we set a ringer. Uh, but they, they had a really nice time, and, you know, to any chance to get on a campus like Colby and experience that with students from around the state is just...
They're scouting for next year.
Uh, our interact students, that club continues to really be a great, uh, great organization for our school. The numbers are, are swelling, um, you know, well over twenty-something. And they had a, a supper at the Rotary, uh, for the Student Aid Fund. As you know, the Student Aid Fund bring, gives hundreds of thousands of dollars to Booth Bay Ridge High School graduates every year. And we couldn't be more appreciative of them. And anything we can do to help promote that entity is, we're always, always looking for ways to do that. Uh, on Saturday, Faith and I attended the Main Principals Association Senior Honor Luncheon. Uh, it was up in Brewer, which is a bit of a drive, but, you know, we got, we made it, we made it through. Um, and, uh, we got a keynote from the new executive director for the National Federation of High School Sports, which is the governing body for all high school sports in the, uh, in the nation, so. And, uh, just a great day to, to see all the promise in that room of all these students from around the state. So that's always a, that's always a highlight for the spring. Our call, our second, uh, post-secondary application rate is up to around eighty percent. Of our seniors have now applied to post-secondary, two four-year certificate programs. Hannah Johnson and our guidance department have been working very hard on that process. And, you know, again, just to reiterate, in two thousand and twelve, that number was around fifty-four percent. So, you know, we've seen some tangible, um, tangible increases there. Last week, Alan and I met with our senior parents, 'cause it is just about that time for the graduation season, yep. Yep. And, uh, talking about, again, as you know, all the unique things that make the Ruth Bay graduation season unique and trying to get...
Get ready, Keith.
We've got my thirty-minute speech ready.
As long as it's thirty, not an hour.
And then, uh, uh, one of the last things, uh, our co- chorus in collaboration with some of our middle school students are going to be the opening, um, the opening act, if you will, for the Main Principals Association Spring Conference this year. So at the Sammlet, they'll be opening the, uh, the conference, uh, for us, those of us that are there. Yeah, a real attempt to, to highlight smaller schools in the state. So I'm looking forward to being down there bright and early and seeing our, seeing our kiddos perform. Uh, and then last, I guess I'd just kinda reiterate what Larry had mentioned earlier on. Uh, most of the folks here know it, 'cause you work here, but the folks in TV land, if, if you really do wanna come in and see what your tax dollars are being spent on, please come into the schools, either Mark or I know are happy to have people come in and let you see some of the great stuff we have going on in these schools. Our teachers do and support staff do amazing things. I had two folks here today, one from the Main Principals Association, the other was a administrator in a large Southern Maine school district, just kinda doing a site visit and looking at some things here, and they were both, they were impressed by the quality of lessons they observed, and it was very proud...
We have so much to offer.
Very proud moment for me, so, yeah. Yes, we do, so much to be grateful for. So, that's all I have, thank you very much, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions with Abe? Thank you, Dan.
All right, I don't have much, 'cause the weather hasn't really cooperated in a while. I'm hoping that we'll be starting our games the week after vacation, but that's not looking real well with the weather forecast. Um, we did wanna just update you, I know there's a lot of talk about spring numbers, spring sport numbers, so I did wanna update you on actually what did end up happening. Um, and, you know, the, the results that we did from the signups was ac- were actually quite accurate. The ones that surprised was baseball, we actually have seventeen baseball players, I think we had signups, we only had ten. Um, fourteen of them are devoted just to baseball, three of them are also participating in the Boys Across program.
That's great.
Um, Girls Across, we have thirteen, um, who are on the team. Boys Tennis, we had seven as of Monday, that might go down to six. Uh, if it does go down to six, it means we will have to forfeit our, one of our doubles. Um, Girls Tennis, we have five, which means we will be forfeiting the second doubles. Uh, Girls Track, we had eleven, and Boys Track, we had sixteen, so combined twenty-seven on that squad, which was nice. And then Boys Across, um, we've had eight, uh, five, three that are devoted just to lacrosse, and five that are playing on other programs. Uh, so unfortunately, it's not enough to actually start playing games yet. Um, and I really wanna be respectful of not burning those bridges of scheduling games and having to cancel them, because I'm gonna be asking these schools for games in the future. And if I went through and built a schedule and then had to cancel it, guess what would happen next year when I ask them for it? Uh, you know, so, I've been, and, and I've talked to Scott, he was, he was on board, you know, you know, I said, if you get enough to get games, then I'll reach out to some of these JV programs. But as of right now, it's a practice-only club, skills club.
Those numbers dropped?
I think they were ten, weren't they?
They were, the, the numbers have been pretty consistent about what have shown up. We had nine on the signups when I presented it, um, you know, but we did have that third, those thirty-one undecideds. Um, and it looks like the seven of them went to baseball, and then, you know, one or two went down to sports. Um, so those numbers have been pretty consistent. So, I, again, I just wanted to update you on that. Um, and I think that we are definitely gonna be doing sports signups using this method in the future, 'cause it did prove to be pretty accurate.
I think the hope is, is that with the, the younger grades, uh, with the lacrosse, we'll be able to, you know, in, in, in a year or so, have a more...
Right, here's the big eighth grade coming up, so that's why, you know, we didn't wanna be like, well, you don't have enough, we're gonna pull the plug on it, we'll little, build skills, um, start forming a team, and then we'll see what happens next year.
Peter Program.
Thanks, Alan. Everyone set with Alan? And, about the light?
Okay. You have the capital analysis and expenditures in your packet. If you don't, I have extra copies of it. We are three-fourths away through the fiscal year, so, uh, again, using math, we should be around twenty-five percent. The only categories are down, uh, below that number, our school administration, and hopefully we'll make that up. And system administration's right on, but the other lines are all, all very healthy. Overall, we're at, again, thirty-nine percent, and, you know, twenty-five percent's the expectation, so we're in good shape. Any questions on that? Okay, the next thing I have is a trustee meeting debrief. Um, it was, it was a good meeting, they finalized their budget. And, uh, the final tally is in your sheet here, what it came up to. As, uh, Mr. Johnson said, the majority of his budget is up because of the trustees' budget. And the trustees' budget is up significantly because they took a five-million-dollar loan out to fix the, uh, the heating system. I, I wanna remind you, and then, in that first, in this first payment, it's just the interest only, it's not the principal. So we're gonna have to start paying interest and principal the year after. And the principal on a five-million-dollar loan is two-hundred-and-fifty grand a year for the next twenty years. We did opt to go, or the, the trustees did opt to go with the first, well, the, to get a bond. Uh, there were two, I guess, two competitors or competitors in that. It would have been the main bond bank who came, their, their rate was a tad lower, but their, uh, I guess the big, the challenge for them was we couldn't pay the loan back early. So the trustees really felt that it was important to pay the loan back early if possible and not have to do this for the next twenty years. So they opted to go with the first, so. That's the reality, it's up four-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars over last year, roughly. Their, the trustees' budget is up thirty percent. They looked at some areas to cut, and there were a couple, but they were pretty, you know, they were pretty, pretty locked into what, what it is that they need, uh, going forward. Yes, ma'am.
The hooks on the roof, I know that it's, it says it in...
Yeah.
And, but you couldn't take them out, is there still a chance to get those out?
Well, what, where I understand, well, the latest I know with the roof is, and it kinda goes down into the, the DOL report. We have submitted our response to their report. And that was one of the issues was, uh, going up in the roof, and I think that's what you're talking about, the hooks, yeah.
Yep.
Well, what we have got their permission to, received their permission to do was only allow contractors to go up in the roof.
And then we don't have to do that?
We don't have to do it, so that money has, I think it's still in there, because in case we have to. It's not, it, the money's still in there for the, for that, I think it was seventy thousand dollars is roughly, right?
We left the money in for possibly having to do the roof system, um, but we did remove seventy thousand dollars for the duct cleaning in the high school. If we end up not having to do the roof, we can use that money to do the duct cleaning.
Yeah. Make sense? So...
Yes and no.
Yeah, the other, the other big part, the, I thought, I did a very interesting part of the trustees' meeting the other night was that, uh, there was a, a, a former gra- a graduate, Tyler Barter. Tyler, was it Tyler?
Yeah.
I think that's his name, yeah. Tyler Barter came, and he is working for an architectural firm down in Portland called Oak Point. And we had talked about getting our arms around the, the, the needs, if you will, in the future of our two schools. That, that has been a topic of discussion since I've, since I arrived here. And, so Tyler came and gave a presentation, and he said, okay, uh, based on a recommendation that I received from the architect, the head architect in charge of all the major construction at, uh, at the DOE, um, he said, really what you need is a, is a study to come in, and what these folks will do is they'll come in and look at your existing infrastructure, your plant, they'll give you some ideas on that, but they're also futurists. They'll look and say, okay, you're not, you know, look around the DRES and look around the high school, and they'll say, well, these rooms could be repurposed for this, or that, or that, or the, and then they're gonna get a lot of community input. So, uh, the, the DOE rep said, you know, Keith, you can plan on fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars for that kinda work. So the trustees put fifty in the, uh, budget for the trustees. And then, when Tyler cut up, they said, okay, how much do you think this works in a cost? He said fifty will cover it, so I felt, I felt good about that. But, uh, we're gonna bring them back for you next, at your next board meeting, we'll bring him back. There's a presentation that I, I received, uh, I believe I forwarded to you yesterday. Yeah, you all got it, yeah. He's gonna give that presentation to the, to the public and to the community at your next board meeting. That was Bruce's request, we could come back and, and do it for the next board meeting, so he's gonna do his best to be back here for that. I think it'd be very helpful. It's not in your budget, but it is important to know. And it's gonna go pretty much...
But it kinda is, yeah.
I'm sorry.
We're paying, so...
Of course, yeah, of course. Yeah, so I think that'll, that'll be helpful.
Keith, I think, I think it's important to say for people that, that are just looking to see, like, how could we just use what we've got there? They're, they're, they're looking to see what is our plan for the next fifteen or twenty years, and then they'll look at what we got and see how that fits.
Right, and it could be the gamut, it could be closed one...
So they're not looking to box us into what we have, they're looking to say, what are your plans for the future? And they wanna involve the community.
Yeah, and it involves enrollment studies.
Yeah.
A, a lot of visioning with the community to understand what, what the, the, the goals are. I, I believe it's, it's gonna be important to have our vision in place when we bring them aboard. Uh, so we're looking out five, ten, twenty years to see where we believe education in this district is gonna head.
Where have they performed before?
He had a whole list of them.
All over the place.
Gorham, Camden.
Gorham.
He'll have a lot of...
Lot of Maine, lot of New England.
Yeah, so, that, okay, that's the trustees' divisioning update. Still working on it between budgets, but it's, it's a lot of work. I'm meeting with, uh, Connie Manter, and we're gonna come together with our piece of it, and then we're gonna move around with it and, and distribute it. And, uh, get feedback on it before we bring it to the board. And then the last one is the DLO report, uh, that is just about done. Uh, there were, well, it is done, actually, there were, there were a couple discrepancies that we have, one more over at the, uh, at Southport that needs to be corrected. And then we're still working on pieces with the, uh, the, uh, the roofs, the roof situation. But it, I submitted my response by five April, which I was required to, so we wouldn't get any fines. And everything is done kosher, happy, smiley faces all the way around from the DOL. So, that was a heck of an effort, and, uh, commending all the custodians, all the grounds folks, certainly the principals, and all the staff, because there were a lot of, there was a lot of, uh, catching up to do with target solutions and, and those trainings. And, and we're still, you know, updates to bloodborne pathogens. And Evelyn put that all together and got that out to meet that requirement, so. It was an all-hands effort to get through that thing, but I think the bottom line is, is I feel comfortable that our schools are, are, I know they're safe, but, uh, you know, we had an outside folks come in and, and open their eyes, and open their eyes and look around the building. So everybody should feel very confident that the buildings are safe when the kids come to school, and the staff working here should feel safe too, because, uh, you know, the trainings are required, the, all the required training's done. All the different pieces that go into, into that audit is, are, were successfully completed. That's all I have.
Great. Any questions? Okay. Old business end, we'll go onto that. Uh, approval of the SS, um, nineteen-twenty school calendar, um, and...
Yeah, you asked, well, I don't really have an update of...
Nineteen-twenty?
We, uh, as you know, we're in sync with what, what, uh, folks over RSU One and the VOTAC do. And we have a unique situation, is that we have a hundred and eighty days calendar, because we have seven PD days, whereas everybody else has five PD days. So we're starting on the twenty-ninth for nine and, nine and below, and then everybody will be in thirty, will be in on the thirtieth. We obviously have our off one on, uh, it's that Labor Day. And then we start in full, and they start over at the VOTAC. So we can't be dissimilar more than five days between Wisk acid and us and RSU One. So I think we're there, we submitted it, and, uh, it's done, so. This is the final product, no, nothing's changed, this is it. So, I need your, yeah.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Six zero zero.
Thanks.
Uh, next superintendent's recommendation not to renew the membership to NISAC, uh, NIESC. Uh, I think we've had that discussion with Dan.
Yeah, I mean, I just, the last step was going through and, uh, talking with the staff and pulling the staff, and, um, the vast majority either thought we should, you know, look to other ways to accomplish the same thing, or didn't really have a strong opinion, so. And again, after the information I got from any of the principals around the state, I'm certainly comfortable. Um, I do, Alan and I have talked, I do think there are ways we can still look at quality control. I spoke with another principal that's kinda tried to replicate that at about a fraction of the cost. So that's something that will take some time, but I'd like to try to flesh out over, over some time as well, 'cause obviously we want quality control, and we want intended people coming in, objective and giving us feedback. We can and have expertise, but I still, I think we can do that. And, you know, save some, save some money in our budget itself.
And the time that it takes to do it.
Time for the teachers.
My name's...
It's significant.
It is.
Very significant.
Thanks, Dan. Any discuss, any questions for Dan or Alan? Okay, uh, the motion?
I don't know that.
Stephanie, second? Any discussion? No? Yeah, I have to go by the paperwork, love? Okay, and now, um, we'll go to our, um, nineteen-twenty budget update, which I'm sure, uh, everyone that's here, uh, we got in that discussion, we have. Um, this has been a long process for us, we, like I said, it's been out that we realized the large increase, um, to the budget this year, uh, due to uncontrolled circumstances. So at the joint meeting with the trustees, as well as us, we asked the administrators, and, uh, they just come up with money, and we said, look, we started at five-hundred thousand and come down from that to see what those, uh, caps would be. So, um, and just wanna kinda reiterate for everyone, it's not a, uh, we have to look at this as a, not a personal decision about any one person, it's just about the position within the district. Um, so that's how we're looking at it. Um, this, and this, we do not wanna cut any, uh, teachers, there's no teachers in here that are to be cutted, um, for this. Uh, there are probably rumors out there that there are, but there are no teachers that, uh, we are aware of to be cut. Um, there is some discussion regarding, uh, position, but that's not a, uh, cut position, but we'll have that discussion as we go. We do have some list of some certain things, and I think I can kinda put some things to rest right now. Um, the curriculum coordinator, we've had a discussion amongst ourselves. Um, right now, we're gonna keep the position as it is right now. We would like to, um, extend it out and offer it, but right now, Dr. Lee's has been here one year. A lot of stuff has taken up some time. We do have Trish, and we wanna thank Trish for the work that you've done for, uh, the curriculum. What you presented tonight is kind of for, uh, kinda comes under the curriculum coordinator with all that. So we wanna thank for the work that you've done, and we just... And we just don't want to, we want to unfortunately let it go for another year and use the staff that we have and see if we can come up with something for next year that we can have a curriculum coordinator. But at this time, we don't feel that we can invest ninety, almost ninety-four thousand dollars into that.
I think this was a really hard decision for us as a board, because we all feel the curriculum coordinator, and we've heard you. We don't want you to feel like we haven't heard you. The curriculum coordinator is an important position. So it was a really hard decision, but the coordinator wasn't, we didn't have the half a million dollar expenses that at the time when we were talking about putting the coordinator in this particular year. So we just want you guys to understand that we did hear how much you want this position and we're not just going to let it go. But how much we need it, how much it will impact the children, which is why we're all here. But we just want to make the fiscally responsible decision this year not to go forward with that position.
Could I add to that?
Yeah.
What I think is that there needs to be a function called curriculum coordinator. But I don't necessarily think it needs to be a body or somebody in the central office. There are plenty of examples around with school systems that do this through principals and teachers working together to do this. And for me, the function is...
It's important.
And there needs to be some leadership to it, but I'm not looking, I personally am looking at this year or next year, you know.
A new position as...
A new position, and I'd like to see the principals and the staff be where this stuff comes from. That's where it really, you know, curriculum improvement comes from, the teachers and working together. Even that Patty research that you gave us, those two hundred and fifty-six factors. The curriculum coordinator is down there somewhere in the middle of all those factors. And the biggest thing, the biggest thing for the buck is teacher collaboration with each other on what's going to happen in the school and the students. That's where I'm coming from.
Can I ask one question though? There was some discussion at the beginning of the year about stipends for that position. Are you going to keep those intact?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Carrie, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm just, Bruce and I have had hearty disagreements about this. So I...
I think we agree on...
To be disappointed, I'm totally on board with not adding that this year just because of the situation we're in. But definitely want to make sure that's on the table for future years, for discussion.
And I just want to reiterate, just the reason that we came up, we realized there are a lot of large expenses. But the increase in the budget this year is almost nine percent. It's eight point six nine percent to booth pay. So, you know, we're trying to be responsible to the whole tax base booth pay. It's eight, six nine, it's less than that and booth pay however. But that's why we came up with this, you know. It's like, like Carrie said, we would be doing, we wouldn't be doing due diligence if we didn't explore all the opportunity, all, everything that we have to look at. So that's why this discussion came up, was because of the large increase. So I just wanted to make that clear as to why. And the next, we had, there's a couple of things that, you know, we had the, that, the curriculum coordinator. And also, I don't know if there was a rumor around or not about a seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher position being eliminated. But it's where we have no desire to eliminate any seventh or eighth grade position in the elementary school. Like I said, we're looking at increasing our enrollment. We want people to come here. So there is no, we've had that discussion, that was on the list. But we don't want any teachers that are currently there to be eliminated in any programs such as this. So just wanted to let you know that's off the list. One of the things that we do have on here is an ed tech position in the boot BRCTC. And that's an ed tech position that's used to go to Bathfolk. And what it is, it's a position that, it didn't turn out as it was planned. So it's, the person goes just to rides on the bus, doesn't drive the bus with the kids. But he drives, goes with the kids and then spends the kids' time with the vocational kids. And it's just, it's a, you know, it's a twenty-three, it's a twenty-one thousand dollar, over twenty-one thousand dollar expense. I'm in favor, you know, of eliminating that position. Some discussion by anyone else that we might have. But I just, like I said, it was not the position that it was intended for when it started. So I just, you know, it's such a bad, it's a cut that, you know, we have to, that we feel we're comfortable with it. Not affecting the kids.
Dan, does that position do any gathering of information to bring back to give credit for some of the work those kids may be doing to give them those credits in their classes?
No, all the credits come right from Bathfolk. So actually Bathfolk issues credit and we articulate the credit from them. Yeah, so Bath does all their own assessments completely.
I would agree that that could be, we could do without that.
Thanks. Any other discussion we got?
Agreed.
And the next is the main office ed tech three. We've had discussions regarding this, the size of the office that we have in the elementary school. And looked at other districts, what they have. And it's, you know, that's on the board for a twenty-three thousand dollar cut to take that position up. There are other, we did look at another district just to see what they have. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in about having an ed tech three in that position. And it's a, I'm in favor of the principals and the current staff doing that position.
What does that position do, what does that person do?
Mark, you're not talking this.
Originally, when the building opened or whatever, there were three building texts that weren't part of special ed. And each level had one that was assigned to, this person was assigned to the middle school. Another person assigned to five, six, and three, four, or whatever down there. As we've lost, or as numbers have gone down, we eliminated two of those positions and we had this one that still remained. Person was available for, if, because they're an ed tech three, they could actually teach. So teachers were out, they can go in and fill that position. Copying, things like that, doing a lot of the grading that had to be inputted on, you know, for the teachers and that kind of stuff. Recession duties, those kind of things.
Building support breaks for teachers that have extended mornings before their lunches to go in. Scheduled breaks so that those teachers can have their work break and step out of the classroom when that person could step in and teach.
So what happens when this position goes?
There are substitute teachers, there is a list of substitute teachers.
In the past, an experience for size of school, we haven't, this hasn't been an ed tech three in those positions.
Well, again, from where I came from, the elementary school had three hundred and fifty kids. There was only one secretary in the office.
I would advocate that the needs of our building and our population, I'd rather us not look at number and look at needs. And the current population needs far outweigh the numbers. So I'd like us to remember that when we're looking at numbers, to please shift your focus to the needs.
Well, I would argue that the school district I came from was very needy too. They had three hundred and fifty kids, they had sixty to seventy percent free and reduced lunch, so they were pretty needy too.
Sure, all due respect, I just wouldn't compare the two, it's a different experience here. Okay.
Are we ready to make a decision on this?
We're not voting.
No, we're not.
No, you're just making the decisions so we can come back with a full budget though.
Well, it sounds like there's a bit of controversy about this one.
Come back to it?
Okay, we can come back to it, but, you know, I'm in favor of it, I'm in favor of it. Stephanie, Carrie, and John.
I'm in favor.
With so many staff here, is it a good idea to ask a couple of them here, just to see what their thoughts are, what changes?
Well, we've had our public comment regarding the budget process.
And there will be another one before we...
Yes, we haven't voted on the entire budget yet. So we can come back to that, but it depends on this, it's a quarter to right now that we have, just to let everyone know. What's that, five, five to one that we have right now for that?
I'm not sure where I am, I just said I need to think about it.
We can think about it.
In all due respect, Keith, a substitute is somebody who comes in for the day and can't do the kinds of things that Trish was talking about, like, you know, fill in on a day-to-day basis with certain kind of needs. But, you know, I'm not going to defend the...
How many, how is it a day-to-day process to could fill in for the classrooms?
It's scheduled, I'll, it's scheduled.
Is it to provide planning periods?
No, this is for them to be able to take breaks, excuse themselves to the restroom and organize things because they have an extended, our middle school teachers have a longer period of morning where they're not able to get out of their classrooms. So that's just one, you know, you could have conversations whether the position, do you need, does it need to be a three versus a one? And there are cost differences in that, so those are conversations that you've certainly...
I mean, I definitely think we need to have more.
Okay, next is...
So am I cutting that or what am I doing with it?
We'll be coming back to that.
We haven't made a decision.
We haven't made a decision. Next is the purchasing of the van. You know, there's a twenty-one thousand dollar budget right there for that. But it's, you know, it's a twenty-one thousand dollar cut, but it's also a savings when we have that.
Why are we purchasing a van again when we don't...
There's so many, well, it's...
No, 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 I just mean, why is it...
Because of a lot of, it's just things that move our eyes. Is how we always came up with it. Things that move our eyes, things of the stationery, our taxis.
That's how I...
Yeah, don't let them give us any more expense, they'll probably give us a yore.
Yeah, a couple here and then we just soon shuffle a few things.
Fire burn.
RSU Twelve has four of these things. And they come in really, they'll save you lots of money. If you're going to take, and the rules are such that you don't put kids in car, in personal vehicles.
No, yeah.
So a district van that has the insurance and has all the liability coverage on it with the right teachers, with right drivers, it makes sense and it'll save money. It'll definitely save money along with money. Anytime you're going to go to Augusta or something, if you need to take, you know, it's fifty-seven, fifty-eight cents now a mile to drive up there. So you would save considerable amount of money if you took a van to go to that.
Actual what dollars would you save?
I'm sorry?
What, do we have an estimate on how much?
I have no idea how many miles it would be put on it. I know I, in my district, I was putting twenty, thirty thousand miles a year on it. That's a lot of money.
Just a little spreadsheet that says, here's that cost, here's what we think it will save and...
I mean, you probably have something that shows how much we paid for mileage out. You can get to us if something's...
Plus drivers, I think, are...
Do you need, can you just drive if you have the regular license or do you need it?
With this van, you just need a license.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Would we sell the other one?
I'm sorry?
I agree with you.
That big white one, that, the profit of that one is, you need a CDL to drive that van.
I'd say, could we sell it, because obviously...
We can try to sell it, we can try to sell it, sure.
We're not going to use it.
Maybe we can say, well, no, we'll see if we can get a trade.
You know, there's a Phish concert coming up in Jan.
I thought I heard Mark Motors would take him to trade.
Okay.
It's a good deal.
Wait, what did we decide about that? I just wanted to ask the principals and administrators, what are your feelings on this van?
I think to Keith's point, I think just the, and Steph, I think I heard you say it, just the savings in with a bus situation, even the white van, you had to have a specialized driver. Whereas with this vehicle, you know, any adult that's responsible for that small group can do the transporting and if they're already, you know, in the role of leadership, that's already covered in the cost. So I think there's flexibility and savings there.
And I think a lot of schools have gone that way.
I think, so I mean, Wisk acid, you go up there, they have them.
Yeah, for years.
So it's what we hoped to get on the white van, but it didn't work out.
And you look at shortened days and changing schedules for certain kids and you're sending a bus to send two kids home.
Right, right.
Yeah. John, are you very comfortable with this or do you want us to go further to get more explanation on the costing?
If I, with what I know, I'd say don't cut it.
I agree.
We agree not to cut it.
We agree not to cut it. John, if you want more discussion, again, we have, if you want more information, Kathleen can give us more information.
I think you're going to find a lot of opportunities to use it, if we do a cost analysis.
Right.
I don't think it's going to be, it's effective. So we have a year under our belts using this, you'll see, it gets used pretty often.
Can we look into selling one?
Yeah, I can...
Well, I think we just do this, then, you know, if we, if we agree to purchase this, but then agree to go out and see if we can sell this, the little bus that we have. Depending on the use of that, I mean, what, how much use the little bus is, because of the van that's more. It may not be cost effective to give...
Do you use the little bus?
So then...
You have that as a life driver.
Yeah.
So let's sell it to the money that's...
Yeah, so if we can do this, but if we can ask Dave or ask someone to get into trying to sell that bus to keep some of this money.
That's a great idea.
Is everyone in favor of that? If we try to, we keep this in, but if we sell the other one? Okay. And the next one we have is not replacing the retiring third grade teacher. That's a ninety thousand dollar saving, savings if we did not. Mark, do you have any suggestions for this?
You know, I think if you want to keep the class size numbers down, I think, you know, we replace that.
Did you have a plan if, we've talked about some things if it comes that, you know, if the board decides that that's the way they're going to go with it, then, but, you know.
Things that we've talked about, if the board doesn't fill the position in terms of the, then, it doesn't necessarily mean that that position isn't filled at that level. It means we as a precase eight school would have to look at where we would have less.
Right, was there a plan for that, Trish?
I mean, I had an initial idea of what I thought we could do with it. You know, is that going to be what's best for the kids? I don't know. But I mean, if you're, you know, if that's the direction that it tells us to go, we'll, you know...
And I think that's where the conversation's about, the possibility whether the middle school position, the social studies position, that's where those conversations had come from.
I think, you know, it kind of goes back to our statement earlier of we're not going to cut a position. You know, that's why I was looking for you for, if this was there, what your plan was without having it. Because we don't want to cut a position. We've all had this conversation, if there's a non-planned process, we're not going to cut it.
I want to clarify too, the conversations that I'm having isn't about, it isn't about BRES. It's about, and Dan's been very open and supportive about this. This is about, it doesn't necessarily mean that the position would have to come from third grade. It could come in from anywhere, something would go if you don't replace it, right? You know, with something back, that means you're missing something. We would be looking pre K through twelve. What are the needs and where would that loss come from?
So I guess I'll ask again, if this wasn't, if we said cut it, is, do you feel that the students are being adversely affected by it?
Yes.
Yes.
That's fine, I think you'll take that off the table.
Yes.
Consensus here? Okay. Replace the consumer science math interventions with an ed tech three. That's a significant savings of around sixty-five thousand. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, we have this, we have a consumer science position now and that is filled by somebody that's retiring. So the majority of that person's time, and correct me if I'm wrong, elementary principal, that it's spent is math interventionist.
Math interventionist and also it does work with the RTI process and some literacy intervention as well. Because as, again, as our population declined and we lost teaching staff, we use that position to fill those needs. Because...
RTI?
Response intervention, it's an attempt to catch students before they fall, so...
Just in...
And the, can I speak? The impact there would be, so we, you know, making an ed tech position, sorry, I'm not articulating myself. Making an ed tech position would provide that ongoing RTI intervention, math intervention that we so need. But another thing that would need to be considered is we would need to replace the allied arts service so that the students are provided something in its place. Because students pre K through eight receive five days of allied arts. And our middle school at sixth through eighth grade access that classroom. And so we need to make sure that we put something in the place because it's those allied art periods that also fill the need to provide...
Teacher's planning periods.
Teacher planning periods. So that is something that... So, we, that is something that, uh, you know, would have to be looked at, just so you have all the pieces.
So, if that position, it's kinda like what you said earlier, we'd use the existing staff within the building to try to find, fill that position with the ed tech threes that we may have. What's that, what, what allied arts, could you explain the allied arts?
Uh, that's your, your physical education, your music, your arts. Yeah, and that needs to be a certified, if there's a class, it needs to be a certified teacher. Teaching independently.
How many, what's she currently teaching?
How many students overall?
Certified classes was that position teaching?
Two, six, is, six. I see a six. I was about to cut it out.
Six. Six over the week?
Yes.
Six a week?
Yes. And again, so, uh, sixth to eighth grade, you know, so it's like two sessions of each for each grade?
I'm just wondering, uh, just, I'm just going back to what you said, if we had other staff that, you know, if one, if an ed tech could teach some, is there existing staff that could teach the six classes that you, that are needed?
You could go looking at, you know, it would be coming up with another class, you know, and is, is there someone available? Whether you look at technology, I mean, there's certainly things you could investigate.
Okay.
Do students have guidance classes now?
They do, uh, we're very proud of the fact that our amazing guidance classes do, yeah, instruction, yeah. And one of the things we did to try to ensure that, um, if we did lose, uh, the consumer and science arts, we have our amazing Sarah Gordon, who as part of her guidance program was joining, uh, Dev Cheney in those classes. So, that curriculum and those pieces that were, were hit upon in that, in that study could be, um, you know, connected to the guidance program.
Would you, um, come back to us or get us information on how you would fill that void of the six of the classes?
Yeah, I mean, that, that piece of it, I'm not as worried about. I'm more worried about the intervention because that's just so huge.
I think if, using the ed tech three, if we move to an ed tech three, what would we lose? That's the six classes.
Well, we don't want, we want the needs to be met, but we're trying to use existing...
Right, and I want you, the experts, to tell us what that is.
And if you had an ed tech three in that position for math interventions, a plan for who would supervise? Because they would need a supervisor.
So, in terms of our title services, Lisa Sharp, but that's, she's spread... Very thin, yeah, she's spread pretty thin, so I, I would probably most likely be, uh, a collaboration of coordinating with her to make sure we're meeting those needs, but administration would most likely be supervising that. That's great.
That's, I mean, it's just like when we, you know, when we eliminate a, when, when a position goes, we try to look to see what we can do. That's where we're at, so thank you if you get this information to us.
I'm sorry, I just have a little piece of information that I'm not sure...
I'll let you, yes, yes.
I'm Lisa Sharp.
I guess you're in the room, yes, you have to be.
And I haven't heard of this yet before now, so I haven't had a chance to think about any of it. But I can tell you, to answer your question before about is there an ed tech three in the, or an ed tech in the building that would be able to do that, there, there isn't in, in our program. We're fully, um, used and, and expect to continue to be utilized for RTI intervention for literacy, um, at this point. So, if there, and, and as far as I know, there are no, um, unclaimed ed techs in the building that would be available with that.
No, I think we would be hiring that.
It would be hiring a new ed.
We're just wondering if we could replace the position that's retiring.
Right, with an ed tech. I just thought I heard Larry, I thought there was someone in the building already that might be that.
Yeah, so it, it's using all, looking at all possibilities, I'm sorry.
I think what Larry was referring to is filling some of those planning period, like some, some of the...
And I can tell you that the, the teachers in the school are really good at coming up with alternatives that work. You know, so if we, if we needed to do something with that, I think we could. I would be much more concerned about, again, the other aspect of that because it's just too important of a position to lose.
So, I just, I mean, it's first, if you could come back, come up to us and make sure that there needs to be math in how. Just going from a, uh, teaching to an ed tech, if that's a...
Right, right.
And next we can go, uh, is don't replace a second phys ed teacher at the elementary school. Cut the P E down to one day a week, that's a savings of almost ninety thousand dollars.
Can I throw two cents in on that?
Yes.
I feel like the kids these days have a lot of bottled energy. And that's, I, I, and I'm not even close to an expert, but I don't know, twenty-five percent of A D D. We, like, the, the number's skyrocketing. And it's, I mean, they drive to the bus, no one walks to the bus now. I mean, when we were kids, we got booted out of the house at eight in the morning and come back at five and we were tired and, you know, we didn't, we didn't have that much energy at the end of it, so is...
That's, that's position I would add the K for.
Is this, like, for the gym, is, is this giving them the energy that they need to keep it sane?
They have recess also.
Oh, well, I, I mean, that's, I, I don't know the schedule, so that's why I'm asking.
I guess I would ask, I just personally haven't talked to you guys about this, but the two building administrators to high school and with two for the entire less than five hundred population, what could we come up with for a gym schedule that might meet everyone's needs by sharing those two positions? I don't know if it's doable, I'm just asking.
Well, I, it could be, I mean, I know my gym teacher carries a load of about ninety students right now and is, um, required to teach health, so could we come up with something? I mean, probably, we, we won't be able to do what we do now with three with two. There's not that kind of flexibility where we can come and say, you're gonna, all the kids are gonna have the same services. It would take me probably shuffling existing staff that I have that are health certified, that are off, that currently teach other sections to pick up health. And we, you know, maybe costs us selective or two in the way, not impossible, but...
And we go from, right now, the way it is, Tim and I, I'll get these numbers mixed up, I'm sure, but, Tim teaches twenty-five classes a week and Lauren teaches twenty-six, or it could be the other way around. That way, every student in the school gets P E twice a week. You know, if you got one person to do it, I, I think it's gonna be cut back.
All of the asking's, could you look at it?
And also, I, I mean, I just wanna, I mean, I tried to carry just 'cause their school has, uh, comfortable, they have more kids than we do.
Hundred more kids and one P E teacher. And we have, um, it's pre-K through eight as well as two adaptive P Es. And, um, some grade levels have one, everybody gets once a week and then a span of them get, every other week you get two. And then some classes, they have a half a year, they have two, and the other half of the year, the other classes get two. So, there, it's, I don't know, I think that we could look at it and see what, what's feasible.
One complication just to kinda have on the plate from the conversation is that, um, the retiring position is our, uh, school certified health teacher. And we, we are required to have that. Um, and so that's just another, I, I am with Steph that, uh, I would continue to advocate along the side mark about the physical activity for our kids. But there's also that, uh, requirement and need that we have for health. And again, if it was reduced and we had fewer, uh, sessions being taught, we still need to fill that with another teaching, uh, role so that we are able to get teachers their planning period. So, there are those two complications just to bring into the conversation.
So, that's what, it would be wonderful if you guys can...
Could collaborate, talk to each other, see what, I mean, if it's for a health teacher to have that, be able to teach down there, and, and they do get two classes, it's every other week. So, I, I think, you know, that's a discussion, you two, if you guys could have...
We're not, we're not saying we wanna cut it, it's just like this entire exercise. We just wanna see what it looks like and how it impacts children so that we can make an informed decision.
You know, 'cause I have talked to other districts and, and that's, that's what we look at when, would we have a position go away? That's why we offered an incentive to retirement so that we could get this, so that we don't have to rip, you know, and when anyone retires, we look at ways that we can fill that position.
I, I will say, you probably won't find many high schools that don't have at least a full-time person, so that if we were using our, but I, yeah, we'll work on it.
Yeah, I'm not in the world of what you guys are doing, but I, the first thing I, pumped into my head was seven, eight, or eight, moving up to get their gym advised. Now, it just seems a more natural thing.
You could do something like that.
It may not work.
I may be crazy, but I'm okay with that.
So, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Only because you're you.
So, yeah, I think it's pretty obvious the impact it would have on our, on our children and their wellness. We live in an age where the kids are tuned into technology. Yeah, we have recess, but it's, it's pretty limited, it's pretty quick for some of our grades. Four of our grades have fifteen minutes recess during the day. Our kids are sedentary and, and there's so much research, there's so much data out there about the benefits of kids being physically active. I think we live in a time too where our children are very, very stressed. They're emotional train wrecks. And, you know, it's, and maybe it's not so much about obesity, maybe it's about taking care of them emotionally and, and movement is huge. I, you know, I wouldn't wanna be a classroom teacher with your kids having physical education once a week. And, uh, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Lauren. I just wanna, just because, you know, just going back to, we have to look at everything and looking at, at Woolwich, where they have a hundred more kids than us, how they do it, you know, we have to look at ways outside our district to, to look at so we aren't reinventing the wheel and the kids would be in service. So, I guess that's another one that we'll look at, um, that we'll come back to if we can get information.
We're looking at, uh, the allied arts piece for the middle school and then collaborating between the two P E. And, yeah.
Thank you, and it may be...
It may not be...
Yeah.
I'll just add one thing on physical education and teacher, and I haven't made up my mind yet either, so I'm glad to look at it, but... Remember when there were a lot of researchers who were looking at the schools in Finland and they were being held up as like where we need to get to? Kids in schools in Finland have physical education every day. I mean, they have physical activity, I don't know what, how it works up to grade levels and all, but it's a built-in part of, um, their learning 'cause it's a built-in part of life, you know, especially if you're young, so... I, I don't know, I mean, we could be going in a direction that is just not supported by any research and may just be monetary, so we should be really careful.
Well, I think that's why we'll get, get the information to us and... Except so, okay. So, that decision has not been made. Eliminate one technology integrator. Keith, could you elaborate on that?
We're gonna discuss that.
Discuss the, the integrator.
Yeah, we have, we have two.
And we're being serviced by having one, it's fine.
I don't think it's fine, I, again, I, I wanna be clear on this.
Yep.
You asked us to come back to you with five hundred thousand dollars worth of positions that we cut. The budget that was originally submitted was our idea, the administrators and the adminis, and my idea on how to effectively run the district. Our charge was to come back with the five hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts. I think I gave, the list that we came up with, they're pretty easy to cuts at the top. But once you go below that, I think we could all agree, you're cutting into the bone and you're cutting into the, to the, uh, effectiveness of, of the schools to operate. So, any of these cuts, none of us are gonna say, jump up and down and say, do them. You gotta, you gotta, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that. This tech integrator, we have two, but that position, the junior position, would serve the elementary school. I believe they need a tech integrator at the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we'd take that off the table.
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table.
Yep. I mean, that's what we said, I mean, we have these up there as top, but, I mean, if it's gonna affect your teachers, that's why I asked you, what's your opinion of having this?
My opinion is, uh, no.
Good.
You know, I, I think that when, you know, there's more and more people coming to our school and if you, if you, I mean, we have to be responsible as taxpayers, but also you never get another first impression. And when people go in and they're running around like chickens or, you know, everybody's, you know, the kids aren't happy and the, you know, I mean, that makes a big difference, so nobody wants to be part of a sinking ship, so you gotta find that battle, you know, that fine line. And I think, you know, and I, I think we're working on it.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we deliver, we, we're not gonna have tech, the technology integrators. Um, and then also the, uh, science teaching position in the high school. I mean, that's something that we've discussed and we're not gonna eliminate. So, that's it. That's it, we've gone over the eliminations that we had, um, and then we have the ones that we have the questions for, for the next meeting.
I'm sorry?
You'll shoot us like David...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the next question, okay? It is now, April, we're out next week, when do we, do you wanna come back to discuss, discuss the budget? So, we have to schedule something after we go. So, what, what is, just to make sure I'm clear, we do that meeting on twenty-fourth. We're gonna give this input, are you gonna come out of that meeting with a...
Yes, and if you could have the numbers that we've got, the numbers that we have given you tonight, have those into a sheet to show where we're at and what it would be with the effects of the questions we have.
Maybe coordinate, ed tech for... What you decided on the main ed tech for the elementary?
That's what we wanted to question. Next, uh, last day, uh, outer district, okay, last day for a school for C S D with June fourteen, two, uh, two thousand nineteen as an update for four state, it's gonna be a year, so that's... Then call us if you have questions. Okay, um, and next we have the superintendent recommend the approval of the meal service agreement in Southwood Central C S D of nineteen twenty year.
So, the second?
Wisconsin?
The next thing on our agenda?
Well?
Kids gotta be fed.
Okay, same thing, superintendent recommend the approval of the meal service agreement at Edco, Eddie, uh, School C S D for nineteen twenty, Bruce, Peggy, zero votes, six, zero, zero, okay. I already had the update of the June fourteenth meeting, policy review, none, new hire reservations, none. Trustee meeting is five fifteen on May first, uh, and our next meeting is the twenty-fourth for budget approval. But just for budget, that would be just budget for the questions that we had and for the budget. Can you do that? Is that possible?
Well, again, you just have to have a pretty solid idea...
Of what we had, you can't put that in until...
Right, I need to know what...
Those numbers are. So, we may have those numbers because you can't put them until we have that final discussion from that night.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I can, you know, bring my computer and try to plug everything.
Yes, we'd like that.
And at that time, but...
If you can try to do that and if, and if it doesn't come up that we need to, need again to approve it, then we'll do that, have a special meeting to approve it.
As long as we have a, you know...
A consensus, yeah, idea, no questions coming back, so you want, we want, we need the information. Okay, uh, thanks Kathleen. Okay, and that, uh, no, uh, item was requested by ass, adjournment, motion?
Amen.
Sorry, are we clear that we're able to have the annual C S D meeting on May sixteen? Cause there's more.
On May, you need two weeks, what do we need for the paper? Uh, we don't do the paper anymore because we do...
There's still, there's gonna be a notification paper.
Ten days or so?
Posted all of them.
To be determined, I guess. I would say yes if, if everything is approved, the twenty-fourth.
We should stay there until it is.
Yes, yes. So, let's just, we only have three questions for it. We only have three questions for it, so I think it's, uh, due diligence to have that done by them, so...
And that would still give, that would give three weeks, right?
Cause it is a lot of work to get it.
It's next to the sixteen.
And we'd like to have it done so we can get on to other things that we told the, uh, association that we'd like to address. Okay, so, uh, we have a vote for adjournment? It's zero, thank you. And it's a ten.